We stand for the prayer and prayers. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day a day of grace and forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever and ever. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yeah.
Here.
Mr. Saint Columbius, Ms. Davis have five present, one extra.
I have a quorum established. This is the regular meeting for July, July 15, 2025, Helena West, Helena City Council. The next item on the agenda is the approval of amendments, but we don't have any to present this evening. So we'll pass up on that item and move to another old business and update on an appointment for, by the governor, and that is for the vacated mayor's position. The update is pretty simple. No appointment has been made at this time, and there's no known timeline, at least not known to me. So at this time, we'll operate under the court order and continue to operate until an appointment is made by the governor. There any questions, I'll entertain them at this time, but that, that is all the information that is known to me. And so just to, I guess if I can follow up on that, operate under the court order. The court order appointed the mayor pro tem or gave the mayor pro tem the powers of the mayor during this period of time. So I have appeared at City Hall this week and tried to work with the department heads. I've asked them to incur no additional debt at this time, to keep their overtime to, to nothing, to the extent it doesn't include emergency services. But again, I've asked them to incur no debt and just kind of let them know how we need to operate and what, what the background of all of this is at this time. I've worked with the clerk and the treasurer on some financial matters this week, and I can tell you in, in these two days of this week, it's been a handful. And whoever who wins the prize of the chair at the head of the table is definitely a fixer-upper. And so that's the status. And the next item on the agenda is going to be the 2023 audit. This is an item that has appeared on the agenda for more than one occasion. Now, last, the most recent time, we canceled the meeting, and that was a special call meeting. If you look at your 2023 audit, there's one finding that basically cites us for reviewing the audit. They found that we reviewed the audit, but we didn't have recommended correction for the citations. And so one of the things we were required to do by statute is to review the audit and then determine what the corrective action is going to be. I know we did it some years ago, and then there was some point where we got out of it, but I don't think we got cited for it. And so that is the purpose for which the audit appears, and we'll go through each item if you have yours in front of you. We'll go through each item, and we will address those individually. And then at the conclusion, I'll ask the council to approve those recommended corrective actions, and then we'll vote on that and move on to the next item on the agenda. If you would, Mr. Treasurer, if you have your copy, can you address each one of those? I guess read the citation for us.
Okay. So the, the first item that needs to be addressed, am I on? The first item that needs to be addressed in the audit would be, page four, kind of towards the bottom, and it's numbered 2023-1.
Page four?
Page four of the audit.
2023-1?
Yes, sir.
I'm in a meeting right now, we have a city council. I'll talk to you about.
Okay, so it states that Arkansas Code requires city management maintain an adequate accounting system to ensure proper safeguarding of assets. We noted a lack of adequate controls as journal entries were not reviewed and approved by an employee other than the preparer. These deficiencies were due to a lack of management oversight and could lead to misappropriation of the city's assets. A similar finding was issued in the prior report. And it also, on the next page, it has my response, has the mayor's response and my response, but I'll, I'll read my, my response. And my response is, was that this issue is not due to a lack of management oversight. Management is aware of this requirement. The city treasurer creates the journal entries, and management is determining if there is another city employee whose initials and approval would be anything but perfunctory. And so what I meant by that was that having someone to initial it and approve it, do they understand what the journal entry is doing? And so I've talked to the city clerk, and she's going to approve the journal entries from now on. So I explained to her what was going on in most cases. And so in, in the vast majority of cases, when I have to go in there and make a journal entry, our financial reports may say one thing, but the financial statement, the statement that I give you, the treasurer's report, may not reflect it, or it may not, it's not mapped to the current, to the correct line item. And so primarily, one of the main things that I do that happens every month is police overtime. So the, for the police officer and, and the staff as well, but that's a small amount. So what I do is I go pull the report, the earnings report, and it shows me one amount for police overtime. And when I look in the financial statement, it's off by about $5,000, somewhere in the neighborhood of $5,000. And so some kind of way, when the city, when the clerk, payroll clerk processes payroll, that, that, and depends on how she codes it, it's not mapped to police overtime. And so what I do is I simply go in and I make that financial statement match what the earnings report says. And so I'll add $5,000 or in the neighborhood, whatever the difference is, I add it to police overtime, and I take it out of police salaries. So that's, that's the journal entry, and that happens every month. And so I've explained that to the city clerk. Another thing, another item that occurs every month is we pay health insurance, and we pay one premium. But when I do the budget, the, the health insurance is expense over each department. And so I just take the list that they give us for the people that enrolled in the health insurance, and I just have them listed by department. And so I go in and take that amount, and I just take that one amount, and I split it out between each department. And that's pretty much the, the basis of the, the journal interest. Sometimes we have correcting entries. Like in one situation later in the audit, when we had some fraudulent checks. And so even though we didn't write the checks, and the bank took care of most of them, I still have to account for it in the financial statement. So I have to kind of do a journal entry to take account of the checks so that we can reconcile the bank account, even though we know the bank is going to give us the money back at some point. So a journal interest has to be made to reconcile the accounts and, and to make corrections to various financial reports. And so I said, I was just going to start telling the city clerk, and then she can approve them and sign them. So that's what that, pretty much that issue was about. And the, the main focus of that is that when they said that these efficiencies, well, says, would ensure safeguarding of assets and to could lead to misappropriation of city, city assets. And what that means is that I could, I, I could go in and just change some stuff. I can make revenues look a certain way or expenses look less than what they are. So there are changes that I could do. And so there is a need for someone else to look over the journal entries to make sure that they're being done properly and they're needed. So that's what that, that, pretty much what that journal answer was about. I mean, that finding was about. And so we've already figured out how we're going to correct that. We just have the city clerk approve them.
Okay, so what, what I want to do is, once we finish this, I want to approve it all as one thing. So are there any questions on that finding? Does anybody have any questions on that finding?
Is that finding also combined with the finding where they did the sample of the employees? They did like a sample of five employees? Is that included in that one, or is that something?
No, that's not, that's a separate one.
That's a separate.
That's separate, yes, sir.
Okay, now, is that also including the finding? Because I'm looking at something a little bit different where it talks about the non-unauthorized withdrawals. 7,000 were made, and you said they, this says the bank discovered five returned $3,000.
Yeah, but that's, that's, yeah, that's on page, and we just haven't gotten to it.
We just haven't gotten there yet, okay, gotcha. But with Ms. Sandy doing the initialing of the entries, that's going to settle that?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha.
In other words, they want somebody to double check just to make sure.
Yeah, I'm just not.
You got two people verifying that the entry is correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so the next one would be, that's on page five, would be 2023-2. And that reads Arkansas Code annotated 1458-201 through 1458-203 requires the city council to approve an annual budget, which is an appropriation of funds for operations and city management to function within this appropriation. However, the city failed to expend funds within appropriations due to a lack of management oversight, resulting in street fund and landfill fund expenditures exceeding appropriations by $424,531 and $524,244,000 respectively. Also, general fund and street fund budgeted revenues exceeded actual revenues by $388,020 and $205,848 respectively. The effect of this overspending constitutes a control deficiency in the process of maintaining city expenditures within appropriations and a threat to efficient, stable operations of the city. As a result of overspending, the general fund, street fund, and landfill fund had deficit balances of $173,122,000, $192,094,000, and $238,833,000 respectively on December 31, 2023. Another factor contributing to this deficit was various accounts payable in the general fund totaling $1,036,692, including the following. $633,585 for payroll taxes, $140,000 for housing of the city's prisoners at the county jail, $263,000, and $263,107 to other vendors. In addition to the general fund deficit balance, failure to pay retirement system payments in 2024 resulted in the loss of the city's general revenue turnback received from the state. Also, the report date, also as of the report date, remittances to the Internal Revenue Service have not occurred since, since August 2023. Furthermore, the city's inability to pay its debts timely led to late payment fees, bank overdraft charges, utility shut-off notices, repossession, and some vendors requiring cash payments on delivery. And again, I'll read my response. The mayor had, had a lengthy response, and it's there. My response was city's management, city management will implement procedures to ensure the expenditures are maintained within the appropriations. And the artist's response was management oversight includes budgeting expenditures in direct relation to revenue availability. The loss of sales tax revenues, inadequate settling of water and sewer rates, and the limited availability of temporary revenue sources are events that are to be factored into the budget and process by management as is approval of any appropriate budget amendments. And so that is that finding.
So basically, the response was, pretty much, we're going to keep it out of the spend and make sure we don't spend over.
That, that was my response. Now, the mayor, you want me to read them?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think I watched it.
So the mayor's response was, well, sometimes I have to see with my glasses sometimes.
I understand.
The city has passed a lawful budget each year of my administration. One of those years, the city council did not vote to approve the supplemental budget, which would have taken care of some of the items you have mentioned in this finding. That is to say that the expenditures were necessary, proper and legal expenditures, but needed additional city council action to fully ratify the actions taken. This statement that you make is a false narrative. The city failed to expend funds within appropriations due to a lack of management oversight. That is simply untrue. The issue is not management and oversight. We encountered loss of sales tax revenues, which now go to the county jail. We encountered the loss of COVID-19-related funds, which had been supplementing our budget, and we did not have a sufficiently funded water department, which caused shortages in other departments. You call this overspending when it, when it really was not overspending. The cleanup budget was not adopted in time to meet your guidelines. The cleanup budget would have cleared up all this lack of management and overspending language. I am diligently working to decrease the city's long-running outstanding debt. There are two simple ways to clear up debt, reduce spending or raise revenue. A more realistic but complicated approach is to do both. Right now, because of the impact of past inflation, we are undercharging on our sanitation rates. Those fees comprise a significant portion of our budget. The reality is that we cannot get blood from a turnip. Our community is impoverished, and we just raised water and sewer rates. We must raise sanitation rates. We have less than 10 police officers while maintaining 35 fighters. Our landfill department has about seven employees. Our, our street sanitation and water departments have about 15 employees each. These staffing levels are relatively low. The water department does also have five clerical people in the office, and the city administration has about eight non-elected employees. With the recent rate increases in the water department, the city has recently begun to receive full payment of its sanitation fees. We are gradually making headway on our past due payables. We are still attempting to sell our hospital. Should that sale materialize, then we will net about $2 million, which will assist with some of our past due payables. We are also considering some other funding options which are not fully developed. We cannot list those plans here. The noted failures on retirement payments, IRS funds, and the like occur because of the financial tailspin caused by charging too little on our water and sewer rates for too many years and the explosion of inflation, which raised expenses and reduced the value of the current dollar. I believe that we can get out of this financial doldrum within the next 24 months through a combination of rate increases and reductions in expenses. To get there, however, our governing body will need to act through policies to be voted upon in a public meeting. And so that was the mayor's response.
Okay.
Can, can I summarize the, the corrective action as, one, we've already raised water rates, which was an increase in revenue? And the second is we have to cut expenses, which is what we'll be doing going forward. And if, if I can just summarize the, the corrective action to that, is that, are there any questions?
I do have a question. So as far as the cleanup budget, I mean, a city council is not required to do a cleanup budget, are we?
No, we are not.
Okay, so the bottom line is really that we just need to stay within the parameters of what is appropriated, right?
That, that, that's right. I'm choosing my words here. The, the failure to adopt the cleanup budget, a cleanup budget would have approved all of those expenses. And the failure to adopt the cleanup budget was essentially the body as a whole saying, we didn't authorize it, so we're not going to approve it on the backside. And that's what happened here. And, and that's the, that's the power that the city council has. Kind of contrary to a lot of people's, kind of contrary to a lot of people's notion that, that we can stop the, the check writer. Yes, yes, sir. And, and so we declined to, to clean it up because we didn't approve it. And so there's a citation in the audit because, and, and the response was that we declined to, to, to approve it, but we declined to approve it because we, we didn't approve it on the front end. And so that's what happened. But I'll summarize the corrective action as we raise rates and cut expenses. The rates of the water rate, rates which were already increased, and we'll cut expenses. And so we'll move on to the next, which is going to be on page Is it seven?
Yes.
Yeah, page seven, it's not, yeah, it's not numbered at the bottom of page seven.
Yes, sir. It's not numbered seven, but.
There's no number at the bottom.
Yeah, there's no number at the bottom, so it's just the one before page eight.
Page eight is numbered, so.
Yeah, you got the right one. Okay, so. Okay, so these findings were for the mayor, city clerk, and treasurer. Says nine unauthorized withdrawals totaling $7,332 were made from the city's bank account between May and July 2023. The bank discovered five of these withdrawals and returned $3,304 to the city in June 2023 and $1,551 in July 2023. The city did not dispute the remaining four withdrawals and therefore was unable to recover the, to recover $2,477. And, okay, so you, you want me to address that or just read these, all, all of them, and then address them?
I mean, I guess my question on that one was, so these were forged checks? Was that what they said?
Some were forged, were just fraudulent, and some were, were, you could take the, you can make a deposit on your phone, and then they would run out and cash them somewhere.
Oh, I see, I see.
Very quick.
I see.
And so it says that the bank called them, but actually we called them while we were doing our bank reconciliations. And so those checks didn't appear in our system.
I got you.
And so I contacted the bank, let them know that some were fraudulent and others had just been double deposits.
Okay.
And so it's my understanding that they knew this, and they were going to take care of it.
Okay.
And so, and then I went to the CID with the city police, and they started an investigation, and they proceeded to the point of going to the prosecutor, prosecuting attorney. And so at that point in time, they told me that they weren't willing to proceed with prosecution, but I believe they may have proceeded on some, in some, some instances. And so that's, that's, that's what happened on that. I, I called all of them, but I just assumed, I knew they had returned some of the money, and I just thought they were going to get to the point where they were returning all of it. So I wasn't aware that they hadn't returned all of the money.
Are they still employees?
No, I don't think so. I'm not sure, I, I, I doubt it, it's been.
I mean, I was about to say, if they were, you could just take it out, take it out the check, couldn't you?
Yeah, but I, I don't, I don't believe they're still employees. Yes, sir.
And it's donation $50,000 down there. Whatever happened to that money?
Can I get to that? It's, it's coming next, it's, okay. It's not next, but I want to just kind of go.
Go through.
Yeah, go through them. Okay, so the next, it states that a review of credit card transactions selected for testing and identified below revealed that supporting documentation was not provided for the following at the time of payment in non-compliance with Arkansas Code annotated 1459-105. Said 22 of 80 transactions totaling $9,566 for the city clerk, and 10, 10 of 10 transactions totaling $4,639 for the mayor made during the four-month period review for fiscal year 2023. Five of 48 transacts, five of 48 transactions totaling $3,614 for the city clerk, and eight of eight transactions totaling $1,037 for the mayor made during the two-month period review for fiscal year 2024. Says subsequent to fieldwork, the city provided some documentation not previously available. However, some transactions remain undocumented. Therefore, the validity of these transactions could not be determined. And so in that situation, I believe that most of
the documentation for your, the things that were made on the city clerk's call were provided to.
Yes, sir.
So we eventually provided, I think, all of the documentation for the city clerk's transactions, but I think in some of the mayor's transactions, but I don't think we got all of the, I think the mayor said he misplaced, you know, he may have misplaced some invoices or whatever.
I don't, I don't, no, no offense, and, and, I don't, I really don't understand it. I, I totally get the, not be able to put your hands on the paperwork, because I've been there before too. But most everything is electronic now. I mean, you can go to your online account and pull the receipts. I don't understand why it would have been difficult for him to get, to produce receipts.
I can't explain it, but the, the, the documentation for the city clerks, all of those transactions were eventually provided.
Yeah, I heard, I heard, and that's good. That's good, because usually like if it's something, you know, hey, can you, when the auditors come in and say, hey, can you produce this? Oh, I didn't, I didn't get this. They'll give you time to go back and get it. And so you just go to your account or whatever and pull it up and print out the receipt, because I've done, I've had to do that before. But the fact that he wasn't able to produce any receipts at all is kind of concerning.
I think I, I provided them with some that I kind of had access to.
You might have had some, but you hadn't put them in the file or something. That happens, but given the time that they give you to get it together, and he still didn't produce the receipts, that's somewhat concerning.
And another thing is that, you know, we've been doing this for a while, several years, so we kind of know to hold on to.
Yeah.
The.
The receipts.
Yeah, receipts, yeah.
But even if, even still, if he had lost, solid lost it, he should have been able to go to his online account and pull it up. That's, that's not helpful.
So I guess, you know, we know to hold on to.
Yes, sir.
Any kind of documentation that's going to be.
As a backup.
Yes.
So is that the corrective action, just make sure everybody holds on to?
Make sure everybody has documentation. I mean, my, my suggestion to any elected officials or employees would be turn in a copy to the, the clerk and or treasurer, and then retain a copy for yourself so that you have one for your own records. Seems to be the safest way.
And I, and I appreciated the city clerk's response about, you know, not having a credit card or whatever. And sometimes you do have to take people's cards, but on the same token too. I mean, you know, we should be respectable, responsible enough to people to be able to handle their own receipts and stuff. And if you miss something, you just go, go get it or whatever. And then there's been times where I'm just being transparent, I haven't been able to put my hand on a receipt. I just, I just ate it, I ate that cost because I didn't have, I didn't have the receipt for it. That's just what you have to do.
I agree. I agree. So we've got corrective action on that issue.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, so next. Is, okay, so the next finding was during disbursement testing, we noted the following issues. The city received a donation of fifty thousand dollars from a nonprofit organization to assist with purchasing an animal shelter building. The building was subsequently repossessed due to the city not paying the remaining balance owed. Adequate supporting documentation was not provided for tested dispersments of six hundred thirteen dollars in noncompliance with Arkansas Code annotated fourteen fifty-nine one oh five. The city paid seven thousand five hundred twenty-five dollars to two vendors. Uh, four, four thousand twenty-five dollars and thirty-five hundred dollars before work was completed in conflict with Arkansas Article, uh, Constitutional Article twelve five, which prohibits cities from loaning credit to any individual. Now, on two of those, the, the ones about the two vendors being paid before work was completed. I believe in that. I think the clerk believes, and the auditors also believe that the, the invoices were just dated, had the wrong dates on, on the invoice.
The invoices remained what, sir?
Uh, we, we believe in it. Auditors believe so also that the invoices were just dated incorrectly.
Okay.
May, uh, if the check was written.
It was like a couple of years.
Yeah, May, May sixth, and the invoice said May seventh.
Oh, okay.
Or something. And so we, I think that when they, they talked to the vendors, and I think the vendors indicated to them that they had just simply made a mistake when submitting the, the invoices. And so they just told us to be more careful. Make sure that those, yeah, at least the check date follows the invoice date. Yeah, and you asked about the fifty thousand dollars, so I think Ms. Ramsey could better answer that.
The fifty thousand dollar donation from the Bissell Foundation was paid on the, uh, kennel. The, uh, kennel was repossessed because we never paid the outstanding balance of sixty-six thousand dollars.
That was the matching part. Yeah, we didn't, yeah, we didn't pay. And why didn't, why didn't we pay? I can't remember.
Well, there was some debate as to whether or not it had even been approved by council.
Okay.
Good evening, if I may.
Please.
Uh, good evening. Uh, I apologize for my tardiness. I was at the mediation. Uh, but if you recall, that was done during the last week of Mayor Smith's administration.
Yeah.
Uh, Mayor Smith did a lot of things that wasn't approved by council during the last week. And the, you had a hundred and some thousand dollars for those cages and fifty thousand paid on it. And the city had sixty-six thousand dollar, uh, left to pay on it.
Yeah.
And the city, it's never been approved by the council. The current administration approved it. There was other things that went with it, not just the cages. It was the erecting of the structure for the cages wasn't properly done at the landfill. He did it in his last ten days, had it put there, and it was put there, and then the people started wanting a, a check for sixty-six thousand.
Okay, but when we, when we, okay, fast forward then, I was, I think it maybe was a year later. And Ms. Sandy said, hey, I've got this fifty thousand dollar check I've been sitting on. What do y'all want me to do with it? We then said, it needs to be, we need, we need to spend it. Was that not have sufficed as approval of the, of the project then? Even from, from this year? Because we did approve, we did approve this, the spending.
If I'm not mistaken, that the cages were over a hundred thousand dollars. Is that correct?
Right, yeah.
Well, we, we know we weren't going to do that much because our, our, our part to play was a match of fifty. And it went over some, I mean, two thousand or something.
No, no, no. What I'm saying.
Okay.
Without council approval, I believe that the cages were over
Oh.
a hundred and some thousand dollars. Am I correct?
Okay. Okay.
And so what I think what Mayor Smith intended to do was put the fifty on that, and then the city paid sixty-six.
Right.
But it was over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars or so that was, that he did without council approval. He just had called the people, had them put it there.
Oh, I see.
Put there.
I see.
And so.
Well, that structure was already supposed, that structure was had been, I say this is, I'm glad we're having this conversation. So that structure was, was intended to be for that, that project. It had already been put there before we got here. And then they, and then we, we asked to cash the fifty thousand. We're thinking, I, I'm thinking, at least I was. I was thinking that that was going towards the, the project, but that had already been.
Well, what happened in the last ten days of his administration.
Yes, sir.
It was shoddy work done at the landfill to put a foundation.
Yeah, I remember those.
Mayor Franklin showed all the, the, the pictures of the shoddy work.
Yes, sir.
And the cages were put on top of that.
Yes, sir.
And that was a hundred and some thousand dollars.
Okay.
The fifty thousand dollars, I think, was intended.
That just paid the fifty thousand on, on what we.
Towards the hundred and some thousand. So you still owed all of this, this money, but it never. So what happened is Mayor Smith, what he attempted to do was get the cage done during his, during his timeframe.
Uh huh.
And never approved by the council. And so you had sixty-six thousand some left to pay on it.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Or maybe he thought he was going, he thought he was going to.
Six thousand seven twenty.
Yeah.
Right. And so the, this administration, well, Mayor Franklin's administration never approved
I understand.
the money. So Mayor Smith obligated it immediately without council approval, without a plan or anything, just put the cages out there. And then the foundation, because it was, that wasn't on the spin. That was just the cages. You paid someone else to do a foundation for the cages.
Okay.
And I can't remember who that person was. Do either one of you all recall?
Okay. Well, I'm glad we're clarifying this because I kept wondering, I was like, wait a minute, we, we, we voted to, um, to, to release those fifty thousand, but I didn't realize that fifty thousand went towards a debt that had already been incurred. Okay, I got you now.
Right, and never approved by the city council.
I got you.
Well, you know, I'm going to be very honest. I, I really hate then that we even put that fifty towards it.
Yeah, I do too.
Because if we knew that we were not going to be able to fulfill that debt, then I just wish we had not done that. I mean.
The issue at the time is they had been. I think that the issue that you all were discussing was they had already been, the cages had already been installed. They were there. And I think that what the, I don't know, but I think.
I didn't even realize that was what that fifty thou- I, because the, I know the fifty thousand was for the shelter. I know Bissell had released, had given us some money. And I was thinking that that fifty thousand was going towards, uh, a supplement to further implement the project. I didn't realize that was going towards something that had already been, had already been previously existed, existing.
Well, I think that's. That changed. I think that's part of the issue.
Yeah.
Because it was done the last ten days of Mayor Smith's administration.
No, I, I got you.
And he just did it without council approval, was well above the spin, the spin authority. And when it happened, uh, the, the clerk was called every day because people said, I need the remainder of my money. It was due immediately. I was told that you'd pay a hundred and sixty-six, a hundred and twenty-some thousand. You still owe me sixty-six thousand. I need payment. I need payment, need payment.
So when the funds were released, just to get them off, off her bag, she.
And they came down two or three times.
I got you.
Uh, to try to, to repossess it. And then they finally came one day when the landfill was open and when I just got it.
Okay, so, 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 okay, so just moving forward. I, I already know the answer to this question, but I just want to make sure. So then after we put the fifty thousand, we had this other sixty thousand debt, and we just, we didn't have the funds to pay the, the rest of the
Right.
project.
The fifty thousand, the, the the structure should never have been erupted, erected or contracted for during his last ten days. This body, when you all first came in, should have been making the decision on that. It should have been making the decision with the fifty thousand.
Well, that's how it got me confused because I said, wait a minute, you said we, we didn't approve, we, we did approve. But I didn't realize, when we say approve, and I didn't realize what, what the approval was. It was actually the actual structure that had already been.
Initially, it spent a hun- obligated over a hundred and twenty thousand. It had no payment. Is that correct?
Yes.
I just didn't know what we were, what we, what that, when you said it went, oh, wait a minute, I thought we had already approved it.
Well, I think we're very fortunate that Ms. Bissell did not ask for her fifty thousand back, and then we would have been looking at the entire debt.
True.
The horizon.
Or she could press charges against us for, so thank God.
Okay.
Okay, so basic response is we're not going to do that no more. Sort of, okay.
All right, thank you.
Get prior, get, get prior approval?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so next is the city failed to make payments totaling nine one thousand six hundred ninety-two dollars as specified in five finance purchase agreements. An annual payment of thirty-two thousand five hundred and five dollars was not made for police body cameras. Three of twelve payments totaling twenty-four thousand five hundred and forty dollars were not made for an articulated truck. Three of twelve payments totaling twelve thousand four hundred and ninety-five dollars were not made for a used dozer. Two of twelve payments totaling twelve thousand two hundred and twenty-nine dollars were not made for a dozer. Five of twelve payments totaling nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-three dollars were not made for an excavator. A similar finding was issued in the prior report. According to city officials, both dozers have been repossessed and the articulated truck and excavator will be, will be repossessed. And so my recollection on this is that, like I stated to the legislative audit, uh, at the legislative audit hearing was that this equipment was not operational, but I forgot to state that, uh, we were renting the equipment to replace the the, the equipment that was not working. And so we couldn't, we just didn't have the ability to pay the rent, get the equipment fixed, and make the monthly payments. So I think that, in my opinion, I think that's what led to the equipment being repossessed.
Now, is it, is any of this equipment, the equipment that was purchased, um, that initially been purchased with COVID money that, that?
No, all, all of this was before, prior to COVID.
Okay.
We entered, we entered into these contracts prior, prior to COVID.
All right.
It's self-corrected and it's been repossessed, so. I don't know if there's any update, anything you can update on the status of that.
They just basically wanted to know why did y'all have all this stuff being repossessed?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But like I said, I, I believe that, you know, a lot, most of the equipment wasn't working, so.
As a matter of fact, if memory serves me correct, the first meeting in January of twenty-three, uh, the landfill representatives reported to us that there was some vandalism of the, they believed it had been intentionally
Yeah.
disabled. And so it wasn't working. And then we got into, into the issue of having to rent to, to comply with the landfill regulations. And so it eventually was repossessed, but none of that stuff was working.
Yeah.
And, uh, I, I know there was some discussion about, um, whether or not there was any insurance money. We had some back and forth. I mean, I'm going back over two years now, but it had been destroyed, they believed intentionally. But anyway, it was repossessed, and so, uh, there's no further corrective action to be taken on on that.
I think that, I, I don't know if it's too late to include statements, but that might even be helpful. As a follow-up statement to the legislative audit too, because I know when they asked that question, one of the senators or representatives made a comment about, um, you know, the care of the equipment, you know, and so that might be another incident you could put in there. But there, there was also vandalism, you know, vandalism of the equipment.
Right, that wasn't covered in the hearing the other day, Friday. That wasn't covered in the hearing. But as I said, that was, listen to testimony, the, the issue that wasn't addressed by the gentleman who said he's been doing this for twenty-six years, uh, was the fact that that was vandalism to the equipment. And so that story, in January or February, when you all first came in in twenty twenty-three.
Yeah.
It was explained that there was no equipment working in the landfill, the sanitation equipment wasn't working. That you, basically it was void of equipment throughout the city. And so that's when you all started approving rentals.
Yes, sir.
But I understand that, that all of those at the table were answering questions that they were asked specifically.
Sure.
So you don't get a chance really to sound on everything and tell the entire story of what happened.
And then they pepper in you with some of their questions.
Yeah.
You're doing the best you can. But y'all did a great job. I mean, just.
I thought they did a good job too, because Anthony is a lawyer too, so he's, he's trying to answer the questions exactly.
Yes, specifically.
Well, some of us didn't go testify. We just went to, to, to be there, and then we got called to testify while we were there. I was not expecting to have to recall all of those facts as they happen. I didn't remember until after we were away, uh, that the equipment had been vandalized at, at the end there.
Yeah.
And so, uh, but, but there was a fact that, and that's how it was reported too.
Yeah, and I had forgotten that too until you just mentioned it.
Okay. Uh, next, um, next issue.
Okay, so next is still for the mayor, city clerk, and treasurer. So we noted the following issues related to the city landfill. The supervisor prepared and approved his own time sheets and was paid twenty-six thousand five hundred and two dollars for overtime. The supervisor and scale operator, who are spouses, occupied an RV connected to city utilities, to city utility. Compensation related to this personal use of city services was neither calculated nor reported on their Internal Revenue Service W two forms. So I.
So are, are they living there now? Are they still there?
No, not.
I heard they still had their.
Reason that, the reason that the RV was out there is because of the vandalism.
Yeah.
We hadn't been able to afford to have the cameras put in. And so the, the, uh, Mr. Simpson was staying out there at night.
Yeah.
Uh, to catch the people coming in, trying to tear up everything they had.
Okay. And that wasn't the worst citation. They said just basically put a, uh,
Yeah.
do a, um, a W ten, W four, whatever you call it, but the thing basically the document says.
It should have been a taxable benefit as we're saying.
Was that W ten?
Yeah.
At W nine, W nine.
Okay, so the corrective action will be to, um, someone has to approve his, uh, his time sheet and his overtime. And if there's any additional benefits, they will be so noted and the appropriate documents will be prepared.
Yeah, and that's corrected too, because there's a director now too, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, so overseas.
Okay, so these next, this next finding is for the mayor and AP, AMP director. The city made the following payments totaling three thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars for related party transactions without authorizing orders in apparent conflict with Arkansas Code annotated fourteen forty-two one oh seven. Uh, first was two hun- two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars to a business owned by an AMP commission member for catering services. And one thousand seven hundred dollars to a spouse of an employee for Christmas pa- Christmas parade decorations and services. A similar finding was noted in the prior two reports.
Yes, attorney, if I may, I just jump you on this one. Uh, we had been doing, uh, an approval uh, and made sure we had it in our records and our minutes at AMP. Uh, we were told at some point in time, we needed a double approval, which is we have to do it at AMP, and then we have to bring an ordinance to this, to this body. We did that after, um, this was noted. And so I think we've done, we did ordinances this year. I think we've done some for twenty-three, for twenty-four, and we may have done them for twenty-five. If not, we'll, we'll do one for twenty-five as well. But they just require double approval. And so, uh, that's how we corrected that. We, we, we have presented the ordinance for these, these, uh, these past gone years. And we'll continue to present them going forward.
Okay, now, the next finding is for the mayor. Said during testing of compensated absences, we noted the following. Of the five, of the five employees tested, two employees were missing from the compensated absences list. And the remaining three had an incorrect pay rate. And the list contained negative amounts for four employees, although employees do not appear to have been overpaid. The governing body reviewed the prior year report but took no action on the findings and recommendations in apparent noncompliance with Arkansas Code annotated ten four, four eighteen.
So, and I'm not trying to be a jerk, but when did, when did we review? Uh, because I saw, I saw this thing. I was like, when did we review? Now, I, I, I wish we were doing last year what we're doing now, but when do we review? I'm sure it's something we did and we counted it as a review.
This is, this is twenty-three, so you, the twenty-two.
Those, they're, yeah, that prior year.
That prior.
Would have been under the former.
Well, no, 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 you, you, you would have been here. We talked about it. We didn't do it as in-depth as we are right now. We just talked about it.
We discussed the audit findings, but.
Okay.
Okay. And, and that's the thing that we got cited and all.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we just talked about it, but didn't discuss it in depth.
Yes, sir.
So this, well, now, the next finding is for the treasurer and city clerk. Said we noted the, the following issues during our review of payroll. An employee did not prepare time sheets or leave slips as required by the city's personnel policy and procedures manual. Total overtime paid exceeded the budgeted amount by three hundred thousand one hundred and seventy-nine dollars. The city incurred penalties and or interest totaling. The city incurred penalties and or interest totaling eighty-two thousand three hundred fifty-six dollars due to a lack of timely payroll tax submission as discussed below. Monthly remittances to the Department of Finance and Administration were not submitted timely, resulting in penalties and interest of eighteen thousand six hundred and thirty-seven dollars. The F and A could assess additional penalties and interest due to delayed filings and unpaid balances of one hundred eighteen thousand three hundred fifty-one dollars as of April twenty twenty-four. The city entered into a payment plan with DFNA to pay the balance, including assessed penalties and interest over twenty-five months. As of report date, the city made eight payments totaling forty-six thousand six hundred and nine dollars. With holdings and matching reported on in Internal Revenue Service Form nine forty-one were not submitted timely, resulting in penalties and interest of sixty-two thousand fifty dollars. The IRS could assess additional penalties and interest due to late, excuse me, due to late filings in unpaid balances of five hundred thousand ninety-one dollars as of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. And the city owes twelve thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars for taxes due on IRS Form nine forty-one for the tax period ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, which resulted in interest of one thousand six hundred and sixty-nine dollars. The IRS could assess additional penalties and interest as of report date, the city had made no payments. And so it is listed, we have a payment plan with DFNA to pay down those payroll taxes. We've made all of the changes necessary with our, um, IT vendor, our, uh, accounting software, uh, provider. And we made all corrections under nine forty-one, so we submit quarterly to the IRS. And, uh, we still need to pay on this, this, this twelve seventy, twelve thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars was a result of one of the corrections that that were made to our year-end, uh, nine forty-one. And so we still have to make, make that payment.
Okay.
All right. Oh, there's one more.
Yeah. And so the last one is for the treasurer. So if vehicle allowance payments to the mayor totaling ten thousand dollars were not reported on his Internal Revenue Service Form W two. And that came about because his vehicle allowance, a thousand dollars a month is a tax taxable benefit.
Yeah.
So it should be taxed. And so what we were doing with Jay, with Mayor Hollowell and with May, uh, Mayor Smith, was that we were taking the taxes, we give them two checks, we give them a payroll check and we give them the thousand dollars for the vehicle allowance. And what we were doing with Mayor Hollowell and Mayor Smith, that said, we were taking the taxes on the one thousand dollar vehicle allowance out of the payroll check. And we just forgot to include that, uh, in twenty twenty-three when Mayor Franklin started. And so by the time we realized that, uh, we told him that we would start making the changes.
Now, was he, did, did, just out of curiosity, and this is neither here nor here, was he given two separate checks or was he, he put all factored into this?
Who?
Mayor, Mayor, uh,
Franklin.
Franklin.
Yes. He, he received two checks, a payroll check and a
Yeah.
vehicle allowance check.
Yeah.
A thousand dollars and the same with Kevin, oh, Mayor Smith and Mayor Franklin. And like I said, the, the.
Were you handling it as a W two then, the thousand?
Yes, it's, it's a taxable benefit, so it should have.
Okay. So was he not able to appropriate any of that towards the, towards the, the ta- towards the old tax?
No, they're, they're saying that he, the ten thousand dollars, they only count ten, ten thousand of it. The
Okay.
Yeah. So he's, they're saying he still, he still owes tax on the ten, on ten thousand of the twelve thousand dollars.
Now, is that our issue or is that?
This is his issue.
Okay. Now, second question. Don't, you don't shoot me down again, but I remember, which y'all are not gonna shoot me down. In the, when we had that meeting, you remember we had the Zoom meeting? I know that's a long time ago, but right, it was right during, right after when we started and we had the Zoom meeting. And I remember we were talking about budgets and I had submitted my budget and then the budget that passed. But I remember in that conversation that I thought that in his package, I guess you could say, was that the ten thousand was gonna be, was, was gonna be waived because he was asking for more money. I couldn't sworn I heard that. So then when I, I read this and I, I saw that he was getting a, a, a vehicle allowance, I said, wait a minute, when did that happen? Because my understanding was that we were, we were supposed to be giving him more money than he wasn't supposed to get a vehicle allowance.
Think it was, it was
It happened.
inadvertently left in the budget.
Okay, okay.
And.
Okay.
It seems like it was an error that, uh, because that was my understanding as well, yours, that we were paying seventy. And I think I learned sometime, some months later that that wasn't the case.
Okay. All right.
And I believe there's, oh, okay. Sit, okay, there's another one on the back page, says mayor and treasurer. Says street fund expenditures exceeded appropriations by four hundred twenty-four thousand five hundred thirty-one dollars, thirty-seven percent. And non-compliance with Arkansas Code annotated fourteen fifty-eight two oh three. A similar finding was issued in the prior two reports. And it's finishes with this letter is intended solely for, for the information and use of the Legislative Joint Auditing Committee, the city council or local governing body and city management and other parties are required by Arkansas and, and other parties as required by Arkansas Code. And it's not intended to be and should not be used by anyone other than these specified parties. However, pursuant to Arkansas Code annotated ten four four seventeen, our reports presented to the Legislative Joint Auditing Committee are matters of public record and distribution is not limited.
So, Mr. Turner, how much of the, of the four hundred, uh, thousand was for equipment?
Is this? Just hard for me to say.
Uh, okay, rough, rough figure?
Not rough it.
Affit?
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, I know this is not, okay.
I mean, because.
I mean, I understand, I understand that being, uh, a response for, for a portion of it because we did, um, had unexpected expenditures of the equipment, but not four hundred thousand.
Well, you had the gobblestruck.
Okay, yeah.
And the boom loads, then you started renting
Okay.
equipment. And you had, because the equipment was, wasn't working, then you had the contract, we contracted with somebody else to pick up.
Okay.
Um, I think that happened in two, two, twenty twenty-three as well, but you had issues with.
Yeah, we had some contractors, great.
With repairs.
Trash, uh, trash.
I hope that going forward, you know, one of the things I've, I've always asked for is an inventory list. And only because, you know, when I come in, I sit down at the table, I can't always remember, you know, what we have purchased, what was working, what we rented, you know? And I think going forward, if every department is required to keep a total of what inventory they have in stock, especially items that are over a thousand dollars. You know, they should have serial numbers and all these things where we can see that. Because it is, I know it's hard for me. I don't know about everybody else, but it's hard to keep, you know, track of all that. So I mean, I think that would be a piece to maybe add in there just for clarification purposes.
Well, Ms. Miller, um, I don't know how many hours I will remain in this pseudo-seat, but I have it on my list here to ask them to put together an inventory sheet of their equipment. And, uh, I've been trying to cover a lot of things in the last, I haven't gotten around to that, but I do have it on my list of things to do. Uh, as well as another, number of other items to try to get us an inventory list of what we have in each department. Andre likes to talk about drinking from a fire hose and that's what I've been doing for the last forty-eight hours. But that is one thing that I want to get done, no matter, you know, if it's, I, I keep telling them, I don't know if I'm here for ten days or ten minutes. But that's one of the things that I want to get them to do is to provide us with a list of inventory, so that we can track our equipment and know where it is.
Well, we do have, on the city side, and I, when I say city side, I'm separating city and water. We have on the city side a capital asset that has listed the properties and the equipment that was valued over, where the equipment and vehicles that were valued over five thousand dollars. So we do have that list. And we have in a, a list of, uh, real estate that the city owns, but it hasn't been, uh, that's where.
Yeah.
We don't know the value of.
Yeah. Let me ask you this, what about like, I know, I know, I know five thousand is a cut score, but like those, I think in the state, they just call, they just call walk away items like, uh, laptops, um, that type of stuff. Do we, are we inventorying that too? Cause if not.
I, I don't think we have like what you would call a formal.
Yeah, we probably want to start doing that too.
And I think, yeah, I think what we had, the, what we were thinking, what we came up with, because we capitalized things that were five thousand dollars and more than that was a merit.
Right, right. Cause that's, that's a law, that's the.
But no, that was suspended them.
That's also the law too. I think it's, it is five thousand or more. Um, and then I think it's, it's another category for some, some other item, but that's actually the law. So that's probably where it got into, where you got to that rule. But you can, you can inventory stuff lower than that. And, you know, it's, it's really at the discretion, but some things like tools, that's another thing that walks away a lot.
Yeah.
Tools.
We do this.
We, yeah, grab, um, that type of equipment.
For, for purposes of our minutes, can, can we get a motion to approve the, uh, the reading and recommendations, uh, for corrective action?
I like. And I'll second.
Okay. Motion by, by Ms. Maxine Miller to approve the reading and, and, uh, corrective action, second by Mr. Kyle Miller. Is there any discussion? Madam clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Messina?
Yes.
Ms. Davis? Mr. Ethely?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. St. Columbia? Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Six yes.
Yeah.
All right. So we won't get a citation on that particular issue next year.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. I appreciate, I appreciate that same thought.
I don't mean next year, I mean in twenty-five.
Yes, sir.
I don't know what's coming in twenty-four. Next item on the agenda is district court agreement and the city attorney will make a presentation on this. And I'll tell you, this is a, this is small, but it is a cost-cutting measure.
The clerk has previously provided you all the copies of the agreement that was, uh, relating to Lakeview District Court.
Yeah.
We previously approved one for Elaine. Uh, we have a, a, uh, district court clerk that does, uh, the county docket, which includes county cases. And currently that's an Elaine docket and, uh, the judge is getting all the case, all the dockets here that's in Phillips County. And so Lakeview has submitted an agreement and it's to pay a small portion of the salary of the, the, uh, deputy clerk that handles the county docket. Uh, Lakeview and Elaine don't have a large amount of cases. I mean, their court is very short. And so the agreement that the judge has submitted to us for review is, is basically identical to the one from Lakeview, I mean, from Elaine. And they, and this, this might have had to prove it to authorized for Lakeview to have court in our courtroom and for them to pay a small portion of the deputy, uh, court clerk's salary.
Okay.
On a reimbursement, reimbursement basis.
Okay. Basically something what we're doing for Elaine. That's what we do for Elaine.
Okay.
They'll be here, yeah. And, and they'll just pay our people a little bit, a little bit of money to, yeah. Do we need a motion?
Yes, we need a motion to adopt the, uh, the agreement.
I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
Motion by, by Mr. Kyle Miller to adopt the agreement and second by Ms. Maxine Miller. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion. Madam clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Ethely?
Yes.
Mr. Messina?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. St. Columbia?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Six yes.
Motion passes. Uh, next item on the agenda is an invoice from Quattlebaum Plumbing. This comes from the water department. This has appeared, I think, once before. Uh, but we didn't take it up and this is for some work that they did to repair some sewer lines in Helena. Uh, as you see, the cost is nine thousand nine hundred dollars, so it exceeds suspended authority and would need a motion to approve.
Was this at, was this the B Street? This?
Hmm.
Where is this?
I'm not sure exactly what location it is.
It, it says B Street.
Oh, does it?
Oh, does it?
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, on the back.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. There it is. There's the activity.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, this is the B Street, um, project is still underway.
Okay. Is that done yet or are we still?
Is, is not.
It's not.
It's not.
Mayor, when? Cause when I tell you, I have had several of my, my folks call me and ask me, you know, they're having trouble getting out of their driveways, they're having trouble getting around, there's Freeman Park. I mean, there's a lot going on over there. I know you said that you were going to.
I, I spoke to the, the superintendent. At the time that I spoke to him, he was out in the field somewhere. And so we're to get together and, and so that he can update me on, and tell me where the project is. I'm hoping to be able to do that tomorrow. So I told him, I gave him a lot of things, a list of things that I needed to talk to him about, but he was, he was out working when I, when I was talking to him. And so, uh, we're supposed to get together and discuss those things. I'll try to give you an update as soon as I get it.
I'd like to make a motion that we pay, uh, the plumbing bill to Quattlebaum.
I'll second.
For B Street.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Maxine Miller to approve the invoice, invoice of Quattlebaum Plumbing for nine thousand nine hundred dollars, second by Mr. Kyle Miller. Is there any discussion?
I, I'd like to make a point. I kind of want to make a point to the general public so that, so people will understand what an expenditure is and what we, what you guys go through sometimes not knowing. When expenditure is happening and we don't know about it, yeah. So this is a prime example
That's an emergency.
of an expenditure. It's a nine thousand nine hundred dollar expenditure.
Yeah.
This is an expenditure. City council has not approved it. No checks have been written. No sign, nobody has signed a check, no two signatures are on the check. This is still an expenditure. It's a nine thousand nine hundred dollar expenditure.
Yes.
And if you look in your, your audit on page sixteen, it says, uh, in note one, on the basis of accounting, it's a regulatory basis of accounting. Financial statements are prepared on a regulatory basis of accounting as prescribed or permitted by Arkansas Code annotated ten four four twelve. The regulatory basis differs from accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. Then it goes on to say that expenditures are recorded when the liability is incurred.
Yes.
It's not recorded when the, when the check is written or when two signatures are on a check. The liability, the, the, this expenditure occurs when the liability is incurred, when that obligation to pay.
When they've done the work.
When they've done the work, you know, that's when spending
Right.
has happened.
Right.
So, and nobody at this table knew about this spending because the city council.
Yeah, but that.
No, no checks were written.
Right, right, right.
Nobody had a signed check.
Yes.
And so when we say there is spending that goes on
Yes, sir.
and the mayor may not have known, I don't know the, you know.
But these are emergency situations. It's just like, it's like if your, your house gets a, uh, you know, a, I don't know, a tree falls through your roof or something. I mean, these are things that have to be responded for. I think that the general public, and I, I, if I can speak for the general public, I'm, I'm part of that population, is concerned about, and, and, you know, it's like a situation where reckless, like, like the term, the terminology is that mayor pro tempore uses reckless spending. You just go out and buy something or you go get something or you go, um, you know, bring five people on, on board, uh, you know, in a, in a department, you know, that's already overstaffed, that type of stuff. I mean, but.
Reckless, reckless, reckless spending.
Yeah.
is spent.
Yeah. Well, I understand.
Still, what I'm trying, the point I'm trying to make is there's, there's spending reckless or not, for other, any, under any other circumstances, it may be occurring, it's still the same and it may be occurring without everybody's knowledge.
Yes, sir.
But it's still spending, whether it's paid, whether the check has been written, it has been.
Yeah, once the work has been done. Yeah, once the work has been done.
It has been completed or it's paid or unpaid. It's still an expenditure.
Still considered an expenditure.
Most of the expenditures, when they discuss the city of Helena, West Helena, they talk about the debt. Two million dollars in debt or whatever. That is two million dollars in unpaid expenditures.
Guys.
Do I need to rescind that then? I mean, because in the, in the interest of being consistent, cause I know I'm going to be the first one. If I see something come across that I think is reckless, uh, to say no. So is this a situation where we need to wait? And approve this?
I don't think so. I mean, the work has already been done. I mean, the vendor's already done the work. What you gonna, you gonna tell the vendor? We're not gonna pay you after you've already done the work. You know what I mean? Uh, that's my view. If, once the vendor has done the work. I think it. I mean, we're in reason that is a reasonable expense. Now, if it's something crazy or, you know. You know, when. It's not, it's gonna be, those are gonna be, those are gonna be, those are gonna be emergency things.
Well, I mean, on B Street, there's a canyon in the middle of the street that, that explains why it was needed. So. I don't think we have a hard time justifying this, although we may not have known about it. And then I would say this on the other side.
And I don't think the people are upset. I don't think the people will be upset by paying expenses.
I'm not saying that they're upset or not. I'm not saying this is a clarify. I'm just clarifying with an expenditure.
Yes, sir. I appreciate that.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
One, one of the things, in addition to what he was saying about what an expenditure is. Uh, when the auditors and the legislative audit are talking, they're talking in line terms of the constitution. The constitution in line with what the, uh, the city treasurer just explained about expenditure. Said that we can't engage in deficit spending and there can't be any evidence of deficit spending. And so those are the issues as well. We have to.
True.
Privately, that's what I kept saying, kept saying, kept saying, and that's what I'm saying publicly also here. Is, and I've said it many times, that we can't engage in deficit spending. The issue going forward after this meeting is. This body has to look at how to curb spending as much from now to the end of this year going forward. We have the municipal league's email that says that we gotta be cautious about what employees you cut at this time. Because at this point, none of us were in administration day to day. So we don't know who, who does what, how it functions, et cetera. And so, but we do need to regulate things that we can, like overtime and what's that like? And, uh, those says what's that like? I said, what's that like? Cause the court orders make some of the mayor, uh, pro tem and, and, uh, in charge. Until the governor appoints. But those type of expenditures have to be looked at on, on a daily basis so that the city can drastically curb expenditures. Basically legislative audit, and I say this as, as, as a repetition of what they asked the four that were at the table consistently. Let's say the audit says that we are too big on the payroll. That was, that was at least fifteen questions about, about employees and how many people work for the city, et cetera. And they basically recommended, uh, that we need to reduce the number of people on the payroll.
Can we? We, we have a motion and a second on the floor. I don't want to get too far.
Yes, sir.
Um, is there any other discussion on the, oh, and let me say this, the, this expense is gonna come out of water funds, not out of the general fund. And the water department at this point is well able to, to do this and, and they won't fill it tomorrow. Okay.
It's coming out of water.
Yeah, this is coming out of the water company. This is not coming from general funds. And since the rate increased, they, they can, they won't even know this happened when they look at their account. They ordered the work done and they're gonna have, they, let me say this also, they want this approved because that project is not yet complete. And they need the contractors that they used to, they need them to come back when they call.
Right.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, yeah, yeah. My comment wasn't about this particular. Yeah, it wasn't, it was just in general. It wasn't about this. This is necessary.
Yeah, I appreciate you sharing the terminology, cause I, I, I agree with you. I don't think everybody would know. I, I think if you say expense, basically it's an expense when it happens. And not that you just went out and bought something. So, yeah, that, I appreciate you for sharing that.
Uh, madam clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Dr. Miller?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. St. Columbia? Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Sir Ethely?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Messina?
Yes.
Six yes.
Mrs. St. Columbia? We, we're not, we, we have, we have, we have one item that I didn't type on two?
Old business.
Oh, two items be- before, and then we'll, I'll, can we come back to you? Let's cover these last two items. They're action items. Yes, sir. I'll, I'll give you a chance to do that. Uh, there's two items that I didn't type on the agenda. I did it myself. Apologies, this is my first time. And so I need to, uh, uh, I want to cover these, uh, these last two items. Now they'll be presented by the city attorney and then I'll give you the floor after they do that.
The first one, the, uh, Chief Sanders is here. Uh, he had submitted a TASER policy to you all. It's an old business. The employees have taken the training for TASER, but they can't use them until the council, the council approves the TASER policy. It was, it was in your, your packet two meetings ago.
Uh, they don't have it tonight.
Yeah, I remember reading it though.
Yeah.
The TASER policy. Okay, we need to approve.
Chief Smith have a TASER. We don't have a policy.
I don't think we had a policy. I don't think we had a policy. Yeah.
There's no TASER policy?
No, they just took the class yesterday and they all got TASED and.
Okay.
You guys appropriated when we did the public safety grant.
Yes, sir.
And you guys appropriated for us to purchase the TASERS. Now we have thirteen thousand dollars sitting in the closet.
Yeah, so you had to do a.
But before they can use them, they had to take the course and you have to approve the policy that he submitted, uh, two meetings ago.
Okay. If, if somebody has it, I mean, I, I don't, I don't have it, if you can find it. Would you go ahead to the, the other item, the rezoning issue?
The other item, uh, that was ordinance about rezoning, when, uh, the petition came here about rezoning. And building a triplex on West Park Street. Uh, I prepared a, a ordinance, emailed it to you all. Um, was that to re-mail the rough draft, but I'd sent the, the final draft to you all. But it's ordinance rezoning in the area from. The geographical borders, uh, uh, West Park, uh, South Marengo, uh, West Russell. And South Sam, that area there, uh, to allow from R one to R three. It's what the ordinance is about. Uh. Yes, they would be able to put.
Triplexes.
Triplexes. They're, they currently only could put duplexes in that area.
And the planning commission has taken this up?
Plan commission take it up and you all had a public hearing on it. You all had a public hearing the same night, uh, that you had the public hearing about, um.
The annex.
Annexing the, the, the islands within the city.
Yes, sir. Any legal, um, everything's good with that? Just we need to approve?
Everything's good with it. We just need a motion to, Ms. Ma, what, what number would the ordinance be?
Forward.
We would need a motion to suspend rules placed on third and final reading, reading the title only.
Is there a motion?
Basically, what's your question?
Yeah.
Rezoning that area I just described.
Yeah. Yeah, we had that.
From R one out to. Yes, sir.
Did we have, did they, was, was that included in the, uh, public hearing?
Yes, that was, we did that first and then you did.
No one.
No one objected to it.
Okay.
So there's a motion by Ms. Davis to adopt ordinance number, what is it? Ordinance number four by placing it on its third and final reading, reading the title only. Is there a second?
Yes, I say.
Second by Mr. Kyle Miller. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Mr. St. Columbia?
Yeah.
Mr. Messina?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Ethely?
Yes.
Uh, ordinance number four to twenty twenty five, an ordinance rezoning a certain property located in the city of Helena, West Helena from R one. Single family residential to R three multifamily residential decline and emergency for other purposes.
Is there a motion to adopt? Motion by, um, Ms. Davis to adopt, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Miller. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Ethely?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. St. Columbia?
Yeah.
Dr. Miller?
Yes, ma'am.
Six yes.
I need a motion on the emergency clause.
Is there a motion to adopt the emergency clause? Uh, motion by St. Columbia to adopt the emergency clause, is there a second? Second by Ms. Davis. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Dr. Miller?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. St. Columbia?
Yeah.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Ethely?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Messina?
Yes.
Six yes.
Okay, now, so we have the, the TASER issue, we, we don't have the policy.
I can read it. It's, it's kind of lengthy, but I could read it if you would like me to.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, the TASER policy submitted by Chief Sanders says the Helena, West Helena Police Department TASER policy. The purpose of this policy to provide officers with written guidance on training, handling, deployment, reporting. And follow procedures involving TASER electronic restraint device. Now, the TASER is, is an additional law enforcement tool that's not intended to replace verbal de-escalation techniques, self-defense techniques or firearms. The TASER shall be deployed only when it's necessary to control a dangerous or violent subject. It may reduce the need for other types of physical force. The TASER will be used when deadly force does not appear justified or necessary. And when attempts to subdue the subject by other tactics have been or likely are to be ineffective. It may also be used, uh, when it would be unsafe for the officers to approach the subject within a, within a certain contact range. Definitions, the TASER specifically refers to a TASER X one manufactured by TASER International. It's seven eighty, seven eight six zero East McLean Drive, suite number two, Scottsdale, Arizona, eight five two six oh. Electronic restraint device, ERD or slash TASER. The device is used to incapacitate subjects through electron, electrical charge. Deployment is the activation of a TASER resulting in arcing, uh, contact maneuver or art, air cartridge discharge. Whether or not the probes hit the target, uh, mere display of the TASER without activation is not considered deployment. TASER is a term indicated, TASE, term indicated, indicating a person or animal has received electrical charge from a TASER. TASER operator certified officer who has completed at least four hours of TASER operator training under certified TASER instructor. Medical personnel includes doctors, physicians, assistants, nurses, paramedics and EMTs. Supervising officer ranked above patrolmen, including sergeant, lieutenant, captain, major, assistant chief of chief. Spark test is a function test performed by activating the TASER without, uh, and attached cartridge. Policy in alignment with the department's use of force, TASER is authorized for, for use by certified officers alternative deadly force. When time and circumstances permit, it is not to be used as a general substitute for other non-lethal, uh, force options. Procedures, the TASER, TASER is intended for use in restraining violent or potentially violent individuals when alternative. Uh, restraint techniques are ineffective or unsafe. Only officers who are certified through department approved, manufactured, approved TASER training may carry and use a TASER. The TASER fires two darts connected by wire. The, the, the subject is typically incapacitated long enough to be restrained. The TASER battery must be checked at the beginning of each shift. Devices with less than twenty percent charge must be returned to the TASER control manager. For battery replacement, a daily spark test is required. Any device or damaged TASER or component must be returned with a written explanation. Officers may not attempt to repair or modifications themselves. TASERS must be secured and stored and carried and approved hosters worn opposite officer's farm side. And another configuration approved by certified TASER instructor. Training certification requires passing a written exam and a successful TASER deployment into a target. Receiving a target hit is optional and voluntary. Annual recertification required for operators. Instructors must recertify every two years. Refreshing training must be completed annually or per. Manufacture guidelines. TASER use must comply with the policy of Arkansas State law. Uh, the city of Helena, West Helena, I'm the city of Helena, West Helena policy five fifty, which places TASER use at a force level three. Equivalent to OC spray, uh, uses criteria. TASERS are considered a use of force and must be employed consistently with department policy. Authorized when verbal commands are failed and the subject actively resists arrest. When feasible officers use a verbal warning, TASER before deployment. Deadly force may be used if the TASER is taken and used and threatened against an officer. Uh, once the subject is restrained or incapacitated, TASER use must cease. Deployment guidelines, daily, daily battery checks and, and spark tests are mandatory. Uh, use, use when TASER force options are failed or likely to fail. Appropriate scenarios include millennial, uh, subjects, armed individuals, violent warrant subjects, intoxicated individuals. Suicidal individuals as a reasonable alternative to other force options. Announced TASER prior to deployment is feasible to alert officers and subject. Lethal covers should be provided during the TASER deployment. Avoid touching the wires or probes during activation. Do not aim at the face, the neck, eyes, aim for center mass. Ideal range is seven to fifteen feet. Avoid using flammable materials, chemical labs or contaminated individuals, or used near flammable materials. Chemical labs or contaminated individuals. Uh, supervise and consult as encouraged when possible. Never point a TASER unless intended to use it. Avoid TASER on pregnant women, elderly or, or mental, mentally, medically fragile individuals. Children or, or those under eighty pounds, persons in wheelchairs, individuals with known cardiac, cardiac, cardiac. Excuse me. Or neurological, neurological issues, persons with pacemakers or sensitive implants. Officers must anticipate injuries from fall and ensure medical care provided. Store cartridges properly, do not use loose cartridges, treat and dispose of probes and biohazards. Demonstrations, training and tests do not require a report unless conducted in the field. Prohibited uses. It is prohibited when effective range cannot be saved with a tease or a near flammable substance. A situation where incapacitation may cause serious or injury or death on moving vehicles unless used to prevent a deadly harm. Or handcuffed or restrained individuals lest there's immediate threat as it means a coercion or punishment. Or excessively or unnecessarily. Dart removal. Once the subject is secured, the TASER operator must notify a supervisor. Probes must be secured as soon as practical unless embedded in sensitive areas in which the only medical personnel may remove them. Officers must attain medical clearance before jail transfer if the, if medical treatment is rendered. If no injuries exist, transport may proceed. The jail nurse must be notified of incident. Used darts are considered biohazards and must be disposed of accordingly. After accident reporting, TASER use is classified as use of force and requires full documentation. Officers must complete a use of force report per department policy. The report must include incident details of TASER and. And cartridge serial numbers, subject identification. If not, the primary officer, deploy officer must submit a supplemental report. Uh, photographs of injuries or lack thereof must be taken and attached for use supports. Accidental discharge including, excluding training must also be reported. The officer personal standards, uh, will include infectiveness evaluation, serial numbers and deployment distances in their review. TASER will be removed from service until data report is downloaded by the TASER control manager. Uh, deployment reports must be included the day before, the day of and the day after deployment if available and be attached to the incident report. TASERS must be, must be presented quarterly. TASERS must be presented quarterly to the TASER control manager for download and inspection. That concludes the policy.
Yeah, is there a motion to adopt?
So will.
Motion by Ms. Miller to approve or adopt a motion, I mean, second by Ms. Davis. Heard them both at the same time. Um, is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Ms. Davis?
Yeah.
Mr. St. Columbia?
Yeah.
Dr. Miller?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Messina? Mr. Messina?
Yes.
Mr. Ethely?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Six yes.
That policy is adopted. Um, at this point, uh, Mr. St. Columbia, you can have the floor.
I listened to the, uh, the fourth, uh, Friday, the legislative joint auditing committee. And most of us people watched it as well. And of course, uh, one of the things, or several of the things that they brought out was. Uh, uh, was our overtime, our number of employees, several things about our city. Uh, that's, uh, they felt out of line. I gave, uh, everyone on the council a list of the city. There are seven or eight, uh, seven or eight cities in Arkansas with a population of eight to nine thousand. Uh, population. And I would like to give a comparison of these cities. Uh, such as Beebe, Arkansas, Hope, Newport, Wind, cities our size. As to how many employees they have and, uh, some of the things that they're doing. In comparison to some of the things that we're doing, such as our payroll, uh, uh, numbers, uh, norms and facilities and. Get a comparison with cities our size. Well, that's why I gave everybody a copy of this. And I'm, uh, gonna ask these, uh, city clerk if she will contact these cities and try and get some information. And I'm gonna ask these uh, city clerk if she will contact these cities and try and get some information for. Uh, before our next meeting to look into. And we could get, as a council member, we can get an idea. Uh, we're not the size of Chicago or Memphis. We, we need an idea of how many employees we should have. And uh, how much money we should be spending. Their income and our income, is it comparable? That's what I'd like to know. So.
You, you also should include what services they provide.
Yeah, right. A comparison.
Right.
Add this back.
Because, because one of the things that, that mostly people are not gonna have is a landfill.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's all I had to say.
Yes, sir. Um, I, 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 I think um, along those lines, I'll tell you that. One of the um. I guess sticking points of where we are is. Trying to, to manage the day-to-day operations, but not knowing how long that lasts. That being said, um. I, I said in my own mind that if there's no appointment. Uh, this week, what I'm going to do is I'm already working. I'm already gathering some information. I do have one, what I would call significant proposal that I want to present to you. Uh, as a cost-saving measure. And it would, it would require council approval. And so I'm gonna get that to you hopefully by the end of the week, but by the weekend, I'll get it to you. Just so that you can consume it and then everybody can take a look at it. And when we come together and meet again, perhaps if you choose so choose, uh, we can adopt it.
Is there any whole ideas? Is that what you're?
This is really specific. It's really specific. I just, I just need the numbers. Uh, the city attorney conference with the Arkansas Municipal League, they did advise us to. Not make certain decisions until. The governor, until the governor made a permanent appointment. However. When I was over in Little Rock. I was caught between, don't make any decisions and you need to make some decisions right now. Right, and so, I, but I think we can, I think there are some responsible decisions that we can make. And I, I would like to, uh, I've already. Had the staff gathering information on how many employees we, we make, I mean, we have, how much money they make, whether they're full or part-time. They're giving this stuff to me on the daily, and so what I'm gonna try to do is have a proposal to you, at least email to you. Uh, by the weekend, and I would ask you to take a look at it. Um, there's two things that I need you to know. The next regular meeting is August the fifth. That means we have two weeks where we won't meet because there's a, a fifth. Tuesday in the month. I won't be in town on August fifth. I don't know that it will even matter on August fifth. If we have a, a permanent mayor appointed, it won't matter. But if we don't, it will matter. And so what I'm gonna ask you to do tonight is to schedule a special meeting. On the last Tuesday of the month. Just in case. And then if we can do away with it. Then we can do that before it happens.
Nineteenth of July, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir. I'm not looking at the calendar, but the last Tuesday, if that's the, the last Tuesday, July twenty ninth, I'm gonna ask you to schedule.
It's two weeks from today.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And that way, we can address some of this stuff. If there's no permanent appointment, we can address it at that time, because I won't be here on August fifth. And so I want to make sure we cover all of our possibilities and bases. And so is everyone available on July twenty nine? Is, is that a group? Or at least do we have enough?
I am.
Okay, so we'll have a special meeting for July twenty ninth. We'll get an agenda together for that date. And then if it's not necessary, we can cancel it. And then uh, that means if there's a permanent appointment, you guys can meet on a regular, unless you want to meet on July twenty nine. I'm available. If there's a permanent appointment, August fifth, the regular date is still there in the venue. Okay. Yes, sir.
Problem hearing.
It's Monday.
Hearing in the room.
It's Monday. You go to the mic.
There's a problem hearing.
There's a problem hearing in the room. And we used to have speakers here that's tied into the mixer. And I think you were complaining about that. You was having a problem hearing somebody.
I was wondering if Mr. Turner could be heard, because he was.
Yeah, because sometimes his voice is so, so I don't know what happened with the speakers we had here, but. What I'm gonna ask Joshua is that we may have a couple extra speakers we could. Let the city borrow and try to hook it in and put him somewhere so you won't have his hearing problem, so. So, because I know sometimes you've complained about the hearing here. And sometimes you have people in here and you can't hear, so we're gonna try to fix that.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I just tell you this? It's not gonna cost you any money.
Thank you.
About speakers.
We, we don't have any, thank you. I told all the department leaders when I talked to them, I said, let me know if you need anything except money. We don't have. So uh, is there anything else that needs to come forward about it? If not, then we'll have a motion to adjourn. Motion by St. Columbia to adjourn, second.
A Thursday.